We'll begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for groups.
Pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, visible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay. First on the agenda is a continued public hearing on lot fifty-two ninety Kempner Road. This has been extended several meetings. And at the last meeting, they were notified if they could not get all the information in. By tonight, we would have to remove them from the agenda, so we've not gotten the information out of the proposal. So I'll need a motion that we remove it from the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? And then they'll have to just start a new application when we're able to get things on. Okay, all in favor?
I oppose.
Okay. A new public hearing, the first sort of has two parts. This is for fifty fifty-one County Road sixteen, Walbert Turick. He has requested an interpretation of his own determination on the property. And if.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the zoning board. My name's Rob Brenner, I'm attorney here in Canadaway eighty-three South Main Street. With me is Logan Rockcastle from Mark's Engineering. If you recall, we were before you about a year ago in connection with this project. And prior town staff at that time had done a code review of the project to determine variances that would be required. At that time, we applied for the variances. We appeared before you, and you were gracious enough to grant them. With the change in staff, which is understandable, there was another code review, and it was determined that a variance was missed. In connection with a garage that had been shown on the plans since we initially submitted plans. So the reason we're here before you this evening is this is a three parcel project. It's an estate property down a private road off County Road sixteen, West Lake Road. And there's three contiguous parcels, all under same ownership. It's going to be utilized as a multi-generational family compound. The applicant's desire is to construct a single garage and storage facility for lake toys, lawn mowers, et cetera. And the architect in laying out the garage to accommodate the vehicles that the owners have. And lake toys and maintenance equipment has drawn out based on the layout of one thousand seventy square foot garage. Town staff's interpretation is that nine hundred square feet is permitted by code. So we're asking for a hundred and seventy square foot variance. That variance is being requested if the board does not agree with us. That the code interpretation in the RR three district is such that you're allowed to have a accessory structure of up to thirteen hundred square feet, which can be a combined structure for the use of vehicles. And for the storage of lake toys, yard equipment, et cetera. I leave it to the board whether you wish to consider the interpretation first, or if we should just move to the variance request. We're here largely on the technicality, and we don't wish to quibble with town staff and understand town staff's position in rendering the interpretation that they rendered. We don't necessarily agree with it, which is why we applied for the variance and the alternative. We're just looking to get the project done for the owners. So we can either discuss the interpretation issue and talk about the technical code interpretation and the difference in opinion. Or if you want to focus on the variance, we're talking about a single one thousand seventy square foot structure to be used for storage of motor vehicle and lawn equipment and lake toys. Where town staff says nine hundred square feet is permitted, and we believe thirteen square feet is permitted by code.
I think since you've requested an interpretation, we're bound to go ahead and discuss that first. And make a determination, then, depending on your determination.
Very good.
So we'll do both tonight. I think for the interpretation, we ought to have Mike present, he's owning the termination. Have you respond as you don't.
Absolutely. Okay, so we came upon, I came upon this determination. The applicant is proposing a detached private garage. In our town code, it's very simply defined as an accessory building structure for the storage of vehicles by the owner occupants of the principal building or structure that does not contain any provision or facility to area servicing vehicles for property. Portion of the structure may be used for storage of household items or personal property. The detached private garage shall not exceed habitable space. Detached private garage shall not exceed nine hundred square feet here. That's the definition. So if you're proposing detached private garage, it can't be bigger than nine hundred square feet, but you can apply for a variance here.
And your disagreement with that?
Yeah, so our position is i- in that same district. If you have a twenty thousand square foot lot, you're allowing accessory structure, detached accessory structure up to thirteen hundred square feet. So if we didn't call this a garage, right, we called it a storage barn or something different, right? And and town staff's responsibly, well, if you're putting a motor vehicle in it, you should call it a garage, right? But I I think that that's a point to quibble about. If we said, okay, we're not going to put a car in it. Just going to have it full of jet skis and lawn mowers. Am I allowed to build it thirteen hundred square feet, or is it a cap of nine hundred square feet? I think there's a gray area in the code.
There is, and we agree that the code as written doesn't make sense.
Yep.
But we have to stand by what the definitions are.
Could we, I'm sorry, did me interrupt. Could we see the what's in writing regarding a shed or general purpose or whatever, if that if that's defined?
What it means, this definition here?
I guess one question I have first, we're talking about RLD, correct?
No, this is RRT.
Where's the R L D stuff?
On their property?
No, no, I mean, because they're right on the water.
Well, it's split the property. It's a split zone case.
Okay.
I'm still interested in seeing if there's a definition for the other kind of structure.
The one right here, the code that they're, oh, that accessory buildings and structures not including agricultural structures shall be subject to standards of that section which discusses structures. Lots with one or more single family or two family dwellings outside the RLD. A lot of twenty thousand square feet or less, they have a total combined footprint, both attached accessory buildings not exceeding thirty hundred square feet.
So a lot is split.
Well, there, yeah, there's lots though. When we do the calculations, this will be.
Where the barn or the garage is being proposed is on the RR three section, so it doesn't overlap onto the RLD at all.
No, we like, we we share Mike's opinion that it's it's less than clear, right? And I think it's an open question on which way it goes. Some of the confusions introduced by by the preamble language in each definition, right? Like accessory structure talks about all accessory buildings and accessory structures. But then you look at the definition of detached garage, and it says accessory building or structure. So it really comes down to, you know, cobbling together that definition. And is it more heavy on motor vehicles? Are there motor vehicles involved? I I think our argument would be much better and clearer if we said, hey, we're not going to put a motor vehicle on this thing. It's just going to be a thirteen hundred square foot barn. And and, you know, maybe town staff would have come out differently on it, but we're not looking to engage in a bait and switch. What we're really after is there's three contiguous parcels as of right. If if you apply Mike's interpretation, we could come in and say, I want three nine hundred square foot garages, one on each parcel, right? And we're not looking to do that or have multiple buildings and disturb that vegetation on the hillside. Ten seventy is what the architect lays out that that fits the lawnmower, the lake toys, and the cars that the owners have. And that's why we're saying rather than build two buildings, if we could get the relief of a hundred and seventy square feet and and build one. The owner would be happy, and whether the board wishes to accomplish that by the interpretation or the variance. You know, I I think that's just a legal formality that I discussed with the town attorney, and he agrees.
Because it doesn't say what kind of vehicles either.
Right, right, yeah.
Tractor vehicle.
Sure.
So when this is over, Mike, would this would this likely be a referral to ordinance? You're in this committee to R R when you refer to this.
Okay. And I will add, you know, not not that it should be dispositive on the on the way you think about this. But our our experience, my firms and Logan's experiences, prior staff administered these code sections a little bit differently, right? And and when we had our PRC meeting with prior staff, they said, yes, a garage of of ten seventy comports with the RR three requirement of thirteen hundred square feet. And I'm not saying they're right and and Mike's wrong. It's just it's a difference of opinion. It's created confusion, and that's why we're here a year after we we first were, you know, and the project hasn't changed.
Discussion.
So how is this done now?
We will, we have to vote to uphold the interpretation or turn it down. We had uphold the interpretation, then we can move on to a variance. If we don't uphold their interpretation, we don't need a variance, right?
Right, that's right.
And if we had the luxury of time, we could refer to ordinance and wait for them to at least come up with a, you know, it wouldn't be overnight that it would be adopted by the town. But at least if they had a proposal, then we'd have something more concrete to work with. If we have the luxury of time.
Maybe, I'm not sure I would require that. My my humble opinion.
And deal with what we have now and work on making it better subsequently.
The intent of the town, what he's asking for here, our interpretation the ten seventy more than satisfies what the town is trying to get out of this. Semantics of garage versus building, is that really what we're talking about?
Yes.
That's what we're talking about.
It's all wording. In my hand and tie, I have to write it.
One hundred percent. And I I think that that's an astute point, right? If we came in here and said, hey, this particular client is an artist, and they want a thirteen hundred square foot building that they're going to use as an artist studio, and it's going to have glass garage doors on the front and slab in it. It would it would be it'd be permitted, right? But the minute we put a car in it, then town staff would say, hey, that that's a garage. But but I think the point's well taken, right? Structure on the hillside in the landscape, it's it's identical, right? It's it's form and function over over definition and use.
We don't like to leave things too unclear because they, then we have to force certain inspection and force. Want to vote?
I I I'm good with voting. I I do think the garage word is very clear here, and there's a definition with that. But on the side of a variance, I think this is well within, you know, non substantial category. My my opinion.
I think I'm kind of thinking along your same same lines. I'm going to try to say the interpretation's correct, which is a variance because of those. Yeah, so we first we need a motion to uphold the interpretation, if that's what you wish to do.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Second. Discussion.
I'm inclined to go the other way, that we we don't need a variance if we have a different interpretation. And I'm not trying to upset the the apple cart, but it just, that's just the way it hits me. I mean, we we both, we probably have the same objective.
Right, interpretation though is based on the way things are now, not how the ordinance committee might change it.
Almost that it sounds like, however, this is this is a mistake. In reality, in this particular district, the ten seventy wouldn't be a problem, wouldn't even require a variance. And and obviously, certainly, the ordinance committee can can resolve this down the line, but I don't like. To me, it's all about the intent of the town. What is the town looking for? What size? If there's, if they were fixed on nine hundred square feet and and they were asking for that, then we would, obviously, it's a variance. But if the issue is, you know, this meets the criteria, and it looks like it does, as long as there's no habit of, you know, there's no space that's habitable.
And the applicant made the point that he's operated in good faith. We certainly could have, you know, you could have called it who knows what, and it would have fit the above and.
Well, there's more to it than that, though. Not only are they calling it the proper term, but they are storing a vehicle, and they're being very clear with that. I mean, if by definition meets the definition of a garage, I don't see how Mike could interpret it as something other than a garage. From his perspective.
Yeah, I.
And I'm not saying that the.
I'm not arguing that. It's it's the square footage that's attached to either one. You know, with something larger, you could have a, you could have a vehicle parked in it and the above. It's not called a garage. I mean, because it's it's not specific in terms of what the usage would be, is it? On the on the above, or are we missing something?
I don't know. There's a lot of negatives in the sentence structure there. But basically, it's saying all buildings unless listed below and the detached private garage is listed below with a very clear definition. I I I think that makes it hard to ignore whether it should have isolate or change the square footage allowance or not. I I do like it going to the ordinance committee for that, but.
Well, I think it should go to the ordinance committee, but nonetheless, I'm looking at, you know, a detached accessory building. And again, to me, it's, I don't mean to reframe it, so I agree with Bob on this, and.
Well, that's great.
Well, I guess one thing. I I haven't seen any rendering of what it's going to look like, what we can get to if we go to.
I do have footprint and section.
That really shouldn't affect our section about accept my thing or not.
Sure, yeah.
We had a motion, we had a second.
Is the boss of the whole, the interpretation?
Yes.
Yes.
I guess what I'm saying, I I maybe we're all at the same line that the the in the end where this will happen, possibly. But it's just a matter, do we want to, is the variance the solution tonight? Or is it is it baked into the interpretation? And I I'm just.
Well.
We'll find out.
My my only concern, yeah, I I agree with you. I think we're all on the same page. My only concern is if we tell Mike, no, you don't know what a garage is by not upholding his decision.
Right.
I I think we're good, you know, I think he's got to come back and say.
Oh, they're saying it to your head, sure.
Right. That that's that's the reason I'm leaving the way.
Okay, want to call? Sure. Do you vote in favor of upholding the interpretation of the definition of a private garage with a nine hundred square foot limit? Shannon Chevier?
Yes.
Bob Hilliard?
No.
Dave, Dave Emery?
No.
Chip Salin?
Yes.
Jason O'House?
Yes.
Now, three to two is okay on that, even though this, we don't have to worry about the Ontario County Planning Board on super majority, right? Now we will have to. Okay, so we upheld him. We would now like to have you present your request for variance.
So again, my name's Rob Brenner, attorney with offices in Canadaway eighty-three South Main Street. With me is Logan Rockcastle from Mark's Engineering. We're here this evening in connection with an area variance request for a one thousand seventy square foot multi-purpose structure to be used for the storage of motor vehicles, lawn equipment, as well as lake toys. Where this board and town staff have determined that nine hundred square feet is the maximum allowable square footage in the RR three zoning. In going through the area variance criteria, we don't believe that this hundred and seventy square foot variance would cause an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. This is down a private lane, all parcels that are down this private lane, with the exception of one are owned by the same owner, and the the one property that's under separate ownership is significantly further down the lane than where this garage located. The benefit, whether the benefit can be achieved by some other alternative. It could be the applicant desires this amount of storage, but denial of of variance would result in the applicant building two structures of of nine hundred square feet versus a single structure of one thousand seventy square feet. Question of whether this is substantial, we'd argue that it's not. It's about an eighteen percent variance over what's allowed by code. Adverse effect on the neighborhood, we don't believe there would be any. Again, this is off of a private road that sits below West Lake Road. It doesn't have any impact on on view shed of any neighbor. The most impacted properties would be those that are owned by our applicant. And is the hardship self-created, as is the case with many area variances? Yes, this is self-created by virtue of the applicant desiring to build a a structure larger than that from anybody. Logan can talk, any questions about where the garage is to be located on the site?
This also is contingent on the removal of the current garage or well.
Replacing, yes, that's right, that's correct. That's correct.
How big was that?
I think it's probably half the size of what we're proposing, no more than five hundred square feet, I would imagine.
And and that garage, as you can see on on Encore, is located closer to County Road sixteen. This one would be a little bit further down the private lane. And and again, the applicant owns three contiguous properties. You know, they are, as of right, permitted to have three nine hundred square foot garage structures, but they wish to consolidate uses because this is, these three parcels are used as a family compound, a multi-generational compound.
And you're resulting lot coverage as well within.
Yeah, correct.
You know what it would be.
Sorry. Lot coverage. Well, let's see here, for this is fifty fifty-one. Lot coverage is fifteen point six percent when twenty-two point five is required.
Okay.
If the luxury of a big property, usually we're here asking for thirty-five percent.
Good. Can we take a look at the rendering? The upstairs?
Storage.
Not the one of the kitchen and.
No. I think the house is going to be big enough for accommodate that.
Yeah, so is is if the board doesn't recall, as part of this project, there were three different residential structures that that were discussed. So there's the main house and then two outwelling. So there's plenty of sleeping quarters.
Yeah, that was, we always ask about plumbing and.
Any utility, any electricity? No electricity?
I imagine electricity, but no, no water sewer hookup.
Questions? Audience?
Yeah.
There's nobody online.
Is there any input, any input in the neighbors at all? No, we've, so we discussed the one neighbor that's further down the lane. As part of the overall project, we're doing some work to utilities and driveway, so they're fully familiar with the project. They had comments on on other components of the project, you know, the driveway relocation and and all that sort of thing. So the neighbor is aware of the project, and and that's the only person down the private way. There's there's nobody else. And like I said, they've they've seen the plan set, they've been involved, you know, dating back a year ago when we were first before you.
Is there an environmental impact with your replacement structure being larger?
Well, the replacement structure is not larger per se, as far as the house goes. It's going in the same footprint, so we're trying to be kind of aware of the environmental impact it's going to have, especially on the very steep slopes that are there. So we're we're doing our best to minimize the impact on the site by using the same footprint in the existing infrastructure.
Well, when I said larger, the replacement would be larger, this garage is larger.
Right. Yes, this garage is larger. But like Rob was saying, that by consolidating the garage into one unit for the whole property, we're hoping to have less less impact on the site overall.
The ECB did recommend an aisle based on just increasing the number of services.
Which, you know, I I I think this board understands that I'd argue was was a short sighted comment, right? Because we can apply to the code enforcement officer for three nine hundred square foot garages.
Makes the condition that they don't have five more, three more.
That's a tough one. Not that there's any intention, but you know, if the properties are ever sold in the future, it's actually be difficult.
Ontario County Planning Board? Did we have anything from them? I didn't see, I didn't see.
So a super majority, or is it a straight majority?
The property was originally referred to them, but not for this.
For probably for site plan review, because we got prelim approval. And I think they would, we would have gotten the variances first, so they would have been notified if we got variances first and then preliminary approval. So. Little unconventional as far as the process, but here we are.
And you said you'd have like guidance that this would be allowed from a different administration. Exactly. Were you involved in that part, or does?
Yeah, so so Logan and I were involved, and and, you know, that hardly matters for why we're here today. But but as every application comes into the town, right? Town staff does its review, we attended multiple PRC meetings. This garage has always been on the plans. It actually was on the plans when when this board reviewed the project for other variances. And it was it was never flagged as a need for variance, and in fact, it was discussed that it it's permitted, does not require variance, and of course, required site plan review, and we have preliminary site plan approval. Which includes the garage, but current staff flagged it as an issue. And, you know, we discussed their interpretation of code, and this board agreed with their interpretation. So that's why we're here before you. But the the plan said a year ago that originally went to Ontario County Planning included the garage. You know, every public hearing we've had in front of the planning board, the garage has always been there. We're essentially here as as a cleanup effort, cleanup act, right? Because it's been flagged as an issue by current staff, and and if you want to use the word missed by prior staff, it was missed by prior staff.
We've had, we've had a couple of ways that there's been some cleaning up on, I guess. And I think actually, we, I was thinking back to that shed last time. One one thing I was going to cast on. Any other discussion? Ready to vote? Are you satisfied with what you presented?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let me close the public hearing.
Do one one last question. How many variances will this sweep in project then if this one were upgraded? Because you you did get the ones last year.
Well, based on the, we changed the building footprint and the architectural of the building, so we don't have any. so we don't have any variances besides this one.
Oh, okay.
This is the only variance.
Cause you're replacing the non.
Yes.
Yes, we, we redesigned a bit to eliminate variances that we had previously, so.
It's like the other garage is, is off the property and move it. Uh, could be the end of it.
They, they did a lot on just some.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, that parcel 5055 that you see there, that's between the yellow parcel and, and Westlake Road is, is also owned by, uh, our clients. And, and there's been a re-subdivision, so the configuration on Encore doesn't match the current configuration.
Not that it's relevant.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Thank you.
So you're all settled with what we've done?
Yes, sir, thank you.
I will close the public hearing. If nobody took any other information from us, so call the question.
Shall the area variance for 170 square feet of the proposed detached garage be granted to the applicant? Shannon Chevier?
Yes.
Bob Hilliard?
Yes.
Dave Emery?
Yes.
Chip Saylor?
Yeah.
Jason O'House?
Yes.
Okay, um, it's not going to change the character of the neighborhood. Well, the, um, advantages to the applicant outweigh the disadvantages that we give them. As presented on our, what we received, as of tonight. Right, do that into us. Um, we have a year, year two, uh, get the building permit, create that. I think, you know, it's not going to change the character of the neighborhood. It's got, um, it's exchanging one garage that will be a little bit further from the road, from the main road. Um, it's, I think it's not a significant variance, it's 18%, as I said. It's fairly small compared to what we're often asked for. And I guess the only conditions, they couldn't use a bird, uh, having this face, there's no water, but that's generally always a condition we'll put in on, on, uh, a garage. It's amazing how they transform over time. Uh, could not be used, just have the full space. Anything else, anybody?
No.
All right, yeah, I guess the other thing, uh, the topography of the, uh, uh, lot certainly dictates some of what they're asking.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate everyone's time.
The environmental stuff is going elsewhere. It's, you know, and you know, in order to keep the building from, I mean, planning community. I don't see us having to, yes, this or mention.
No.
Well, I think if the lot coverage had been in question, that's when it would come up, the environmental.
Right, right, and that would've maybe.
Yeah. Yeah. That was weird, just in general. That was weird, just in general, the camera.
We've got to have something weird once in a while, particularly, it's the only thing on our agenda.
I don't know that I have anything more insightful other than that.
Well, Mike, it's a good thing you're flagging this stuff, because, you know, it's, we, we need to, uh, you know, get it, uh, together.
Yeah, none of us in the office agree with that law. It doesn't make any sense. And I know square foot garage is not sufficient size.
Right.
Storing one, it doesn't make any sense, but, you know, we got to go as long as we're given. But let's, uh, we have a motion that we refer this to the ordinance committee?
Absolutely.
Okay, yes.
Absolutely.
Everybody agree?
Everybody's agree.
I guess who has to make the vote, the Mike?
Okay, I, I move for, uh.
Second.
I will.
Okay, second. All in favor?
I.
I think that there may come a time now with all this stuff going on, that the ordinance committee might rate, be raised to a level comparable to ours and what we have, uh, in terms of how often they meet and, and the importance of what's, uh, going down. This one, you know.
Not, uh, well, you know, when.
Look at, I know you were on the orange.
I'm not anymore, you know, I think they, they voted.
Who's our representative on?
But with a foreign base, it's going to be, you know, the new frontier.
The only problem that I have is, now, this is, that I know of, is we've had two front yard pool issues and a whole bunch of this type of thing that have come up because of this confusion, which happened a year ago in March, with the staff changes. And I can tell you right now, I would be really annoyed if I had a, a building permit in my hand and all of a sudden somebody came in and said, oh, oh, no, no, stop work on this, and then we're gone. Especially if I'd already built the pool and/or the garage and or the accessory, and I just, to me, too bad, so sad.
It's, I think that we've used that as a reason to approve some things that I wouldn't earn any of its proof. I'm thinking of the one on Westlake Road near where we live, would say it already built a bigger shed. Which would be a never.
Well, eventually, this should end.
All right, let's see. Really hurry, maybe, set a record. No rehearings? For our town board, town manager, ordinance committee, preferred to approval of the February 20th minutes as distributed. I made one small correction, but it was more of a dramatic. Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Oh, sorry, yeah, motion based.
Sure.
Second.
Okay.
Uh, all in favor?
All right.
All right. We got much coming up? Six on the upcoming video.
Are they, uh, supposed to hire a town, town manager?
No, no idea.
Still got a chance to apply?
Yeah. So six, then? Uh, are they such that you think we can handle six?
Oh, easy, yeah.
Fairly straightforward.
Famous last words.
I'm glad not to have to think about the cap now one tonight, yeah.
Yeah.
Now, we don't have to think about it for at least a couple months.
Now, what is the application, uh, uh, how, what does it cost to make an application for a variance under? Cause I, I guess on the small side, I was looking to, and to save money on this one. I mean, I'm happy.
You have no idea how difficult it was. I had to agree with you.
Yes. That could be a poster stamp. That's like a first for, you know, in history.
Anybody else have any within this?
You were talking about laptops. Is that still in the?
It's either still in.
Well, it's every way.
What was that, Doc?
Is that really necessary? I'm just asking.
And what? Are you buying laptops for?
Yeah, they're gonna buy laptops for all of us.
Yeah, I got a wonder that too.
I would vote against that.
I'd, I'd, I'd be the only one who would like it. All I have is a, is a, uh, an iMac, a, a desk at home. So I don't have the portability that you guys, uh, might have, but, uh.
Now, with those, the thing that I don't like about the way we have it now is, like, I went out to their, this line and can't really see that map on my iPhone. I mean, um, would they be portable so that? I'm not sure what they're getting, if they're getting tablets or laptops or, but I was told that everybody's getting some.
By you have to print it out and then, there you go.
Well, there's laptops always. I, I don't necessarily show the question.
Oh, I just, um, I mean, I can't take a laptop out there because there's no wifi.
Oh, put it on your phone, just don't.
No, you get that map on the phone or something.
No, 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 no.
No, I was saying, print the map out like a, like an legal sized paper.
And I'm saying, use your phone as a hotspot to your laptop.
Okay, when I try to print out on my computer anyway, unless I just don't know how to do it, those maps?
Yeah.
They, they.
Right, right.
Just, you know, take the whole thing, so you really can't focus.
There might be printed some of on paper this big, man.
Yeah.
Sometimes you can snip the piece you need and put it on like a, a word document and then print it, so. So you only snip like maybe a 40% of it, and it can still, and then exactly put it on a word document.
I'll have to play around, or I may have to go and see your.
Just out of curiosity.
Come, I want to find somebody younger.
Of, of the board members that were here, how many people need this additional technology?
I, I do. Well, I'm.
Besides Bob.
Yeah, I'm having trouble with the, uh, cloud. And I'm hoping with this and, and another tip, I came in once uh, and Sarah showed me, uh, how to do this stuff, and by the time I got home, uh, you know, it was like a battery that runs out of its charge. I, I didn't, uh, have the essence of, uh, what she told me in person, so. I, I, I would appreciate the portability. A tablet would probably, uh, you know, suffice, uh, whatever. I mean, but I, I'm, I'm so far behind everybody else when it comes to tech that.
I wouldn't say you're that far behind.
Okay.
No, I'm just, you know, not that it makes any difference that anybody would ever try to save any money in any government, in any way, shape or form.
I guess I, I would, I feel pretty strongly about that. I think, um, I mean, I've got.
I guess you probably.
Got a laptop, but it's, it's not a special laptop, but it certainly works. With this, and I could bring it in, it has a battery.
I can show you how to make yourself on a hotspot, so you have wifi anywhere you go.
Okay, I would appreciate that.
No problem.
So on a hotspot, I wasn't sure what that meant.
Yeah. No, your, your, your phone can transmit wifi and then using your data plan from your phone, from your laptop.
I would appreciate that. With this new Verizon tower and.
And.
Should we make, we need a motion, or you just want to take that back? We don't all require.
We could just stop for our input, maybe, who's, who made the decision?
I'm not sure. I, I was just given the floor of ten. I think.
Plus, they didn't really ask that, you know, they should've asked us.
You can tell them that four out of five of us didn't really feel like we needed. In fact, I just do not have another laptop to keep track of.
Well, I see Tyler.
Okay. Save money. They could increase our salaries.
Save money on the government.
Okay, anything else? Motion to adjourn? Any motion?
We're trying a second.
All in favor?